Good evening. As we begin tonight, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence to recognize the tragic passing of one of our high school students this past week. Thank you. Our thoughts and prayers go out to his family, friends, and staff members who've been impacted by this tragic event. Let's give them your thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is the reading of the district mission statement.
I'll read it. Ipswich Public Schools aspires to empower all students to be global citizens who are effective communicators, analytical problem solvers, and savvy consumers of information. We propose to do this through an emphasis on communication, critical thinking, creativity, self-management, perseverance, and collaboration. Students will be active partners in authentic learning, offering voice and choice, and demonstrating competency.
Thank you. All right, next item is announcements. The next school committee meeting will be held on Thursday, November 7th at 7:00 in the middle high school ensemble room. The special town meeting will be held in the Performing Arts Center in the Ipswich Middle High School on Tuesday, October 22nd at 7:00 PM. And negotiations with the AFSME food service unit will be held on Thursday, October 24th at 4:30 in the middle high school guidance conference room. Any other announcements? Okay, next, special acknowledgements.
Yes, several starters are middle school and high school counseling staff and administrators. These past two weeks have been incredibly difficult for everyone. These folks stepped up and did an incredible job in the most difficult of circumstances. We're very fortunate to have them. I also want to recognize the teachers for their flexibility during this time in order to meet the needs of both of our, you know, both our students and in supporting one another. And finally, a thank you to all the people who reached out to us over the past two weeks to offer support, resources, or just a kind word. It was certainly appreciated and didn't go unnoticed. So, thank you, everyone.
Any others? Okay, I'd like to acknowledge Dr. Blake for his compassion and guidance over the past few weeks. All right, next item is public comment. Before we begin, I just want to remind the members of the public that the appropriate way to contact school committee members is by speaking at public comment or emailing the school committee at the email addresses as stated on the district website. Now, I'm going to read a statement that we read before all public comments. Public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between individuals in the school committee. It is an individual's opportunity to express an opinion on issues within the school committee's authority. While the committee and/or administrators will not typically respond during public comment, the chair's presiding officer of the meeting may choose to if she seems it expeditious. Further, should the chair believe that an issue falls outside of the purview of the school committee, she may request that citizens direct it to the appropriate person or body so that the matter is given proper consideration. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person and a total of 15 minutes overall. And this will be the only opportunity during this meeting for members of the public to comment. And should you comment, please state your name and street. And given the potential for there to be many public comments tonight, we are going to keep a close eye on the time. I'm going to set a timer just so I don't have to try to verbally interrupt people. Are there any public comments? Okay, we are starting at 7:06, so we will end at...
Oh, Povetson Niedler to Cortland Way. So, I just wanted to comment on the elementary school project. And there are many things, but I have three minutes, so I will say, big push for, you know, modern education, building, and community building, and bringing the two halves of the community together, which have been separated in the past. But I'm going for the bottom line here. So, Ipswich has two aging elementary schools, which are no longer functioning for our students and educators. Winthrop was built in 1956, Doian in 1965. We all know that they need to be replaced, they were not designed, and do not work for the type of instruction happening in our classrooms in this century, and they are physically failing as they age. In 2018, after years of work towards replacing our aging elementary schools, a project was finally brought to town meeting for approval. It was a proposed single elementary school on Linebrook Road at the site of the existing Doian Elementary School. Ipswich had been accepted into the MSBA program, and the new school had a price tag of around $65 million, $27.1 million, which would have been paid by the MSBA, leaving around $38 million to be funded by the taxpayers of Ipswich. There was division within the town, and it needed a two-thirds majority at town meeting to pass, 66%. The project got support of a majority with 64% of town meeting voting in favor of the school project. It missed by 39 votes. Here we are, six years later, in much the same position with a few important differences. One, our schools are now in worse condition, necessitating a projected capital expenditure this year of $2.7 million to keep them limping along until we can find a solution. That's $2.7 million, which could have gone towards a new school building, one which would have been completed in September of 2020. We are now, number two, also in the process of building a long-awaited and much-needed public safety building, which means that people are more worried than ever about costs and taxes. With 64% of town meeting on the record supporting a combined school, I do not believe that it will be possible to find 66% who will vote in favor of building two schools. And three, due to the passage of time, the rise every year of construction costs about 3% annually and inflation, the cost of any project has gone up. By Mr. Engel's estimates at the select board meeting in August of this year, we are now looking at likely construction costs of not $65 million, but $113 million for one school and $237 million for two. While the MSBA, if it accepts Ipswich into the program again, will contribute around 31% of the cost, that would leave Ipswich taxpayers paying $78 million for one school, nearly double the $38 million of six years ago. The longer we argue and debate, the more expensive this project will get. We need a new, safe, modern school now. Our children and educators deserve it. My mother would have said, "If wishes were horses, beggars would ride." And I will say, "You can't always get what you want, but if you try, sometimes you just might get what you need." And Ipswich cannot afford two schools. I am sorry, but it is the truth. We need to come together as a community and build one beautiful new school for our children and our community. Ipswich deserves it.
Thank you.
Hi, Pete Pletza, 279 Argilla. I'm reading a statement on behalf of another Ipswich citizen who couldn't make it tonight. He had other obligations. "I'm a resident of High Street and a father of two Winthrop students and write to offer my support for maintaining a small in-town elementary school. My wife and I selected Ipswich and our home in part because of its proximity to a local school. My children have adored their school, their teachers, and their experience. They feel safe, they're happy, we have loved walking to school every day and building community with other students and families making the journey. The familiar faces walking with us and waiting outside the building and playing on the lawn at pickup and on the walk home are a welcome and important part of the small-town life and have helped my children bond to their school and their community. These benefits are not trivial. Beyond writing to give a voice to the benefits of a small in-town school, I write to caution the majority on the committee about progressing towards what it wants by following what appears to be the same playbook that it ran the last time around. In layman's terms, and in my experience as a resident homeowner and voter, one, push for a one-school plan and vote it out of committee; two, obtain provisional funding from MSBA based on what the majority of a school committee want without regard for its ability to garner sufficient support from the voters to become a reality; three, dangle the prospect of that funding or loss of that funding if the one-school plan isn't accepted as a primary reason to support the one-school plan; four, criticize opponents of the plan at public meetings for, quote, "showing up late," unquote, and, quote, "saying, 'Where were you when we discussed this a year ago,' unquote, when anyone voices dissent ahead of the consequential vote." This is not a complicated strategy, and I understand its appeal to those in the majority on a committee, but it isn't how things should work. The last time around, even when the MSBA provided one-school proponents with enormous leverage ahead of a consensus, the project still failed. I hope the MSBA does not allow the prospect of its involvement to be used as a wedge that the committee considers finding a plan that can garner sufficient support on the merits instead of using the promise of funding as a pawn in a game that masks dissent, gives an illusion of momentum, and results in a destructive process that leads nowhere. Once the committee takes its vote in support of one school, I imagine that it will represent to the MSBA that things have changed and that it has broad consensus and a better chance of success than it did when it failed. Presumably, it will show a five-to-one school committee vote as evidence of this fact. I hope that any transmission from the committee to any potential funding source will not just include a footnote that one of its members vocally in favor of maintaining a small in-town school has recused herself from participation in this issue, but that she has not done so because she believed herself to be conflicted, but instead has been silenced on dubious grounds by an outside agitator who was explicit that he was attempting to silence a committee member with whom he disagreed on this issue. These kind of tactics will open the door into costly legal challenges and similar attempts to bar participation by other members of this board and other term boards. The committee's seeming acquiescence to a bare-knuckles approach to getting its way and rushing through another proposal to get its hands on funding augurs another messy and unsuccessful process. Sincerely, Isaac Garcia Dale, 3 High Street." Thank you.
Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Jamie Norton of Linden Street, and I first want to say, Dr. Blake and School Committee, I'm very sorry for your loss. This is my 25th year in education. I've been a school administrator for 15 years, the last 10 years in Beverly, and I was part of the planning process when we built a very large, brand-new middle school in Beverly. I have two children currently enrolled in Winthrop, and I fully agree with every single argument, every argument that is for keeping two schools in Ipswich. But in the interest of time, I just want to specifically address the need for a thoughtful approach to our school infrastructure in light of our growing student population. In Beverly, since the opening of our new middle school, it was built in 2018. It was built to accommodate for the population at the time despite projected increases, and that is an MSBA regulation. Since then, we have faced a significant shift in classroom needs due to population growth. The building was initially equipped with enough classrooms for every court teacher, every specialist. We actually had 12 makerspaces to spare for project-based learning. Only six years later, not a single maker space is available. They have all been converted into permanent classrooms to meet our rising environment, and several teachers are sharing spaces. Our gym, which was designed to house three classes simultaneously, is now packed with up to five on certain days, which creates a cramped environment for the students and the teachers. While the decision to move fifth grade to the middle school was very cost-effective and saved the city a lot of money, we're now confronted with the reality that our facilities are bursting at the seams. With Ipswich continuing to build new homes, we can anticipate further increases in our student population. To avoid issues similar to those that we're currently encountering at Beverly Middle School, I urge the committee to prioritize building a new Doian Elementary School and postpone plans for Winthrop for the time being until housing developments stabilize. I think you have a real opportunity here to make sure that we have space for all of the students who are going to be moving into Ipswich in the years to come. Also, if I may say, while having one state-of-the-art school that all students can enter at the same time would be wonderful, it really is certainly very appealing. What truly matters in a school building is and has always been the quality of teaching. I know that equity is very important to everyone here, but I do believe that quality teaching means that there will be academic growth for all students. Thank you.
Hi there. My name's Sean Cashman. I live on Summer Street. I've been in Ipswich for about six years. I have two students in the middle school, two students in Winthrop. I'm, I am in 100% support of maintaining two schools in this, in this town. I, to the many points I've made, they're all very valid, but one school does, does take something away from this town. Community, accessibility, and just equity, right? And to the point that was just made, this town's going to continue to grow. People who can't make it to a parent-teacher meeting, people who, you know, after school, because they're, they're unable to get to Doian, the Doian area. There's, there's a lot of things that go against what this community stands for if we go to one school. I know people say it's going to be cheaper. I don't think the numbers are all that far off. I think there's a lot of black-and-white facts that get thrown out about one school and why it's the best option, but we don't live in a world of black and white. We live in a world of gray. I think it'd be a disservice to the kids of this, this town to go to one school. I'm obviously very passionate about it. I've attended some of these meetings before. You guys have a huge task. I'm sure you're exhausted by it. We're all pretty exhausted by it. And a final note, I think, you know, to the point that was made from the letter, some of the games are being played to have certain members of this board to recuse themselves because of impact on their own personal finances, I think is, it's a shame that people in this town are allowed to do that and affect you and your decision-making process here. And if, if one person should be recused, y'all should be. You're all impacted by this. You have a huge decision on your hands, but to think that one person is going to be, has the ability to, to make an impact on who gets to make a decision here and who doesn't, I think it's shameful. I don't think there's another word for it. Good luck with your decision.
Thank you. Thank you, Sean. I do recommend that you check out the State Ethics Commission website for more information. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Ingrid Miles. I've been in this community for 41 years. I know many of you in this room. And what troubles me is that we're having this debate at this point in time without even going through the process in a more meaningful way. Having said that, what I feel very strongly about is I, I'm a firm believer of two schools. And the reason being, it really supports neighborhoods. One thing we heard about the internet when it first came in, I'm a former technology consultant, is that it was going to support neighborhoods. Well, it's done a great job. It's isolated a lot of people and caused a lot of harm, emotional harm, and separation. A community school allows for a team spirit. And as one who was athletically involved in a small school in upstate New York, we loved having our team sports, even at the elementary level. So, I really feel that team spirit is another byproduct of having two schools. But more importantly, the one thing that no one's talked about, because I've served on the finance committee, I've been a board member, we look at budgets, we're always concerned about economic development. And I really question, what's going to happen to the vibrancy of our community downtown when all the moms and dads who are having to drive elsewhere, because as I understand it, the one school would be out at the Doian location, correct me if I'm wrong about that. But, and, so the vibrancy of that neighborhood sense, the vibrancy of moms getting together, meeting at Zoomies, going to the bank post office, doing things with their kids after school, that's all going to be gone. We're going to be a suburban community. I've also spent time on a lot of those visioning programs in the past about, what does this town want to look like? Do we want to be a suburb? Do we want to then grow into an exur? I mean, I, I just heard a comment about the 3A process that says that we are a target to become a suburban community. That's not why I live here. People that I talk to, and I'm in real estate, so I talk to a lot of people, and why they come here, they come here for the character of the town. If we lose that character, we may lose the value that we offer this community. So, small schools are good for neighborhoods, community, teamwork, pride.
Thank you. Thank you, Ingrid.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. There's four seconds left. So, sorry, public comment is ended. It's been 15 minutes. Thank you. We meet next on November 7th, or you can send us an email. All right. Thank you all. Next item is the high school student representative report, and our high school representative had a scheduling conflict and will not, we don't anticipate he's going to be present this evening. We look forward to hearing from him at our next meeting. All right, we are moving on to presentations. First, we welcome middle school principal Peter Genolfi to hear about a overnight field trip request to Washington DC and Philadelphia.
Hi, good evening. We have actually two overnight requests. First one is a sixth-grade trip to Ecology School up to Sacomaen. That's a yearly trip we've done for a number of years. Last, this will be the fourth year now that we've been at the new Ecology School. It used to be Ferry Beach previously. Cost of the trip this year is coming at $390. We expect about 100 students to attend that. And it's a three-night overnight, four-day, three-night trip. At Riverbend Farm, the Ecology School at Riverbend Farm, are deeply tied to our curriculum and sustainability and ecology units that we teach, and a big highlight of the sixth-grade year. It's been going on for many years. And our other trip is to Washington DC. It's a little bit different this year. Last year, we spent, this is the eighth-grade trip that goes to Washington. We use Green Classroom as our travel agent. It's been the third year we've been with that group. Last year, we spent, I think it came in at 23 hours on the bus going there and back. A lot of time in traffic. We get good views of Baltimore Bridge. It's no longer there, and a lot of time on the bus. While bonding wasn't the best use of our time, so I had reached out, I asked Green Classroom, if we flew down, what would the difference be? He said it was $50 difference, because we could save on a night, a night, it would be down to a three-day trip. We'd leave Wednesday morning early, fly down, spend three days in Washington DC and fly back Friday night. So, it would save three meals, it would save the buses and all the expenses. Buses are very expensive, and it would save a hotel room. And it would give us a much more enjoyable trip and rather than being exhausted in the bus. And fortunately, the bus I was in last year, the AC was intermittent, and we had no DVR. It was, and the kids, it was interesting. So, we reached out and, this, only for a $50 increase, I think it's well worth it. But all the other parameters of the trip are there. We wouldn't be going to Philadelphia, which was really just to stop over to try to shorten the trip back. All the main sites are in, are in Washington. We see all those same sites again. Happy to field any questions.
Any questions?
Quick one. I think both trips are terrific. I want to make sure that we're able to support any students that may not be able to pay for it. On the DC trip, there's just a note about the field trip grant to be able to support scholarships. I tried to find it real fast just in sort of, we did not approve that yet. I just want to make sure we're set up to make sure that you have the funding you need for that.
Yeah, the Police Beats Learning Grant, I actually wrote that, and we have enough funds in there. It is a slight, little bit more money this year. However, we think the class may not, this class doesn't need as much money, if that makes sense. Just demographically, I think the money will be there. And it's sort of prorated for each student that might need support, but no one is turned away for lack of, for needing money or anything.
Thank you.
One little detail. What airport would they fly into in DC?
I'm not sure of that yet. There's three, so I'm not, I'm not sure. They haven't gotten to that point. They just got us the price quote at this point, and those details will come. I don't know if it'll increase the amount of students that want to go, because it is a long time on the bus, or it may decrease. People might not, you know, I didn't fly till I was in college, so, I'm old, so, a little different nowadays.
That was actually my question. Had, had, have you floated this out to the community and like, kind of seen where people were at? I think it's...
Our meeting is, if you approve this, our meeting is next Wednesday.
Okay. And I guess, I mean, and I think that I'm kind of surprised I have never heard of, you know, flying to DC despite all the years that our school and many schools go to DC. So, I think that's a neat idea. But us approving this, even if you had to shift your mode of transportation based on feedback, that you would still be able to
Yeah, at this point, it would be easy to switch back. It's easier to always get the buses. It's, you know, a long ways out, so.
Awesome.
We could definitely do that if there was a number of, the sign-up date's pretty early to sign up. It's a $120 deposit, but that's by the end of, end of December. So, we know there's not many people signed up. We can reevaluate, and there's plenty of time to switch back to the, to a bus.
Any other questions or comments? So, these were two
Thank you.
different lines on our agenda, so I think we'll just vote them separately. So, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the overnight field trip request to Washington DC.
Second.
All right. Move by Sasha, second by Jen. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? All right, seven, none opposed. The motion passes.
I move to support the overnight field trip request to the Ecology School.
Second.
Move by Sasha, second by Jen. Further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Seven, no one left, so the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so next up, we have a presentation on MCAS accountability data, and we welcome the Director of Teaching and Learning, Dr. Tracy Wagner. And we can move... Yes, for sure.
Speak into that, because that's for people that don't...
I like a microphone. That'll be okay. All right, wow. Hi, everybody. This is the annual MCAS and Accountability Data presentation. I know it may not be why you're here. I don't flatter myself, but I hope you find it to be interesting. It's certainly an important part of our school district. I am Dr. Tracy Wagner, Director of Teaching and Learning. So, today, I'm going to give a big-picture overview of MCAS, both as the state is it is in Massachusetts, and then our Ipswich data. I, of course, won't dig into it in a super didactic way, but more in an overview. But to look at our numbers and the trends, I'll also explain accountability data, what it is, what our data looks like, and more importantly, what we do about it and how it informs our next steps. So, MCAS assesses students' knowledge of the Massachusetts learning standards. This is a statement from the state about what MCAS does. It's basically how students show us what they know and are able to do. These are all the MCAS tests that students across Massachusetts take. I won't read them to you. I know you can see them, but I will note that this past year, the state introduced a new MCAS at the eighth-grade level. We were part of the mandatory pilot of the Civics MCAS. So, the eighth grade takes much testing, and this will be the first year that that will come into play formally for them. But there are the other subject areas and grades. This last, so, the students who took MCAS sees the scores for last year, so last spring, and starting that time, there was a new statewide competency determination for the class of 2026. That's last year's sophomores who would have taken the 10th grade test. So, the state adjusted. They made higher the competency determination, which is the fancier language for the graduation rate. And so, it was common across the state of Massachusetts in the 2024 data to see slightly lower MCAS scores or graduation rates for students, because the state had raised them. Just something to note. When you look at our scores, and there's the particular scores, if you're interested in that, there's a lot more information online that you can see. So, to consider when we look at our scores is, these represent last year's students for teachers. So, if you were a third-grade teacher, those students would now be in fourth grade. IPS uses lots of benchmark assessments. One of the many difficult things about relying on MCAS for teachers is that it's your last-year kids. So, the students that you have in front of you, you need other benchmark assessments to be able to know more about their learning. And later on, I'll show you some of those measures, and when it comes to be budget time, you'll certainly see us ask again for those measures, so that teachers have data about their current students, not the last-year ones. IPS, once again, vastly outperformed the state's standards averages on MCAS overall, which is very notable. And I'm very proud to be here to represent the hard work of students and teachers and administrators and parents. All this data I will show you is publicly available. You can Google DSE Ipswich MCAS report card. You can crunch it in all sorts of different ways. I'm just going to show you one snapshot and explain it a bit. You can crunch it in all sorts of different ways. I'm just going to show you one snapshot and explain it a bit. When you talk about MCAS, you talk about two things. You talk about achievement, which is how students do, the scores that they get. And you talk about an SGP, which is the Student Growth Percentile. When I talk later about the accountability data, there's a very complicated algorithm by which both come into play. But long story short, it's important not only that students score highly on MCAS, but that they show growth. And in many ways, even if a student is still working towards getting a meets expectation on MCAS, it's more beneficial statistically for them to be growing in how well they do in a like cohort of peers over time. And that will come into play when we look at our accountability data and MCAS scores. We'll talk about that accountability data algorithm a little bit later. Oh, I think what's next though is my personal favorite part of the annual MCAS data presentation. When we go past looking at annual comparisons. That's right. It's time to quiz the school committee. Can they pass MCAS questions? Here, I heard a gasp over there. Here we go. So last year we did ELA. This year we're going to look at third grade math. I'm not actually going to ask you to do it, of course. But I think it's important for us to put ourselves in our student shoes and take a look at what they're actually doing. So students are taking their tests online. They are pen and paper. This was a third grade math question. All the math questions I chose are ones where we vastly outperformed the state average. We did very, very well on these particular questions. So here's a third grade question. I know the font's kind of small. It says, and I won't read all of them, but I'll read this. An index card is cut into two equal parts. What fraction of the total area of the index card is one part? Enter your fraction in the space provided. Enter only your fraction. And then the students get this blank box where they have to type in their answers and they have all these tools that they can wiggle around and choose. Anyone on the school committee want to venture a guess as to the answer? I will not hold it against you if you do not want to. I know you have a lot on your plate. It's one half. And how would you write that? Do I have to use those keys? I would write one slash two? Yes, very good. So the answer is one half, or the state says any equivalent fraction. No decimals are involved. So think about all the pieces that come into play for a student. It's online. They have to know what an index card is, or that's just confusing. You have to know a lot of academic words like fraction, area, one part. You have to be able to manipulate the technology to answer it. So there's lots of things. And you're in the third grade and you're sitting all day taking the MCAS test, which is also just plain hard. So our students did very well on this, so I thought that was fantastic. So the first set of data I'll show you is for both schools combined. Things I look at, I look from year to year. We want to see when we combine the exceeding expectations, so that's the highest student can score. And the meeting expectations are separated or combined. They're improving from year to year. There's another way you can look at this where you see the SGP, not for third grade, but for other grades, which is how much the students have improved over time. And those scores are combined later on into accountability data. So that's together. I've also provided it separated. We can see that at both schools and ELA, students did very well in third grade. Again, I won't spend too much time on it, but if people have questions, please stop me or I can go back. And here it is for math. A trend in our elementary schools that I was very proud of was the sharp rise in our math scores, which is great because we have spent time and investment and coaching in illustrative math as our curriculum. We have math coaches. We have data meetings in math. We have benchmark assessments and it's working. The scores for what they're worth for elementary in math have gone up, as have the ELA, but not as much, which is a reason why we need new ELA curriculum, which we piloted this year. So there we have that. This is fourth grade combined. Again, we see scores going up. There's always areas of need, but we were very proud. And then you can see ELA, which is English Language Arts. So that's the English exam. English is not just literature anymore. It's probably seventy-five to eighty percent nonfiction. It's journal articles, scripts, it's graphics. It's not just poetry and and literature anymore. So those are quite good and I intend to see them improve as we get more into our new curriculum. Math, again, super proud of it. It's gone up in both schools. Fifth grade, we see the trend continue. Math, sharp rise. ELA, a little rise. It's going to get better. And a lot of alignment between the two schools, which I'm also very proud of. We've been working hard on that. So here is ELA, again, is English for Doian and for Winthrop. Little rises, oops. Math, big rise. Fantastic. In fifth grade, they also take their first year of a STE, which is Science, Technology and Engineering Math or MCAS, and we saw sharp growth this year, which was great. And also we had spent time doing a curriculum review on our science curriculum. And that was pre-K through five. Teachers were using revised curriculum units and we saw growth. It worked. Very good. All right, it is quiz time. This is a seventh grade math question. Again, we vastly outscored the state on this. It's so good. I might just quickly have to read just a small part of it. A teacher recorded some data about the students in her class. I'm going to read this really fast on purpose. The probability of a randomly selected student having a pet is eighty percent. The probability of a randomly selected student having short hair is point six five. The probability of a randomly selected student having no siblings is twenty-one percent. The probability of a randomly selected student having a cellphone is five tenths. A student from the class is selected at random. Determine the likelihood of each statement about the student. What? Drag and drop each event into a box to show whether it's probably unlikely, likely, or neither unlikely nor unlikely. Wow. So the students have to read this. They're in the seventh grade, mind you, so they're twelve or thirteen. Here they are. And they have to be able to figure out what all of those percentages and decimals mean. And then they have to drag. It's not like multiple choice often anymore. They have to drag the right answer into the box. I'm not going to imagine anyone wants to answer this, but if you do, no, Jenny's like, please no. So if you want to know the answer, you are welcome to seek me out. I will help you. But I think it's really cool that we outperformed the state on that. Sixth grade ELA. We did very well. We outperformed the state. Seventh grade math, we dipped just a little bit, but the SGP was very high, which means it's a group of students for whom testing can be hard. And they might not have scored as well as the kids the previous year, but they outscored themselves the former year, which is great. So we were happy about that. Same in ELA and seventh grade math. Eighth grade ELA, we're seeing the same story, which is that they might not have done as well as the last year's class the teachers had. But they outperformed themselves as a cohort from the previous year. So high SGPs and a little bit lower growth. That's good. We can work with that. And in eighth grades, they also take science. All right, last one. I will absolutely not read this, but this is a tenth grade math question. You can see it's very complicated. It involves a grid and some geometry, but also some algebra. It includes a lot of manipulation of the page. It's online. Teachers can't read these out loud to students. They're taking them independently by themselves. You have to pull all these factors in. And we did very well on this particular question. So we have our tenth grade ELA. Our ELA scores have been very static, which means the same mostly from year to year. We did see our SGP drop a bit, so I'll talk a bit about some changes we're going to make in our tenth grade curriculum to try to address that need. Same in math. Our scores have been very similar from year to year. So we're looking at the curriculum again to try to support students in a raise of that. In Massachusetts, you can take the high school science MCAS at different times. So we choose to take it in ninth grade for biology. So those are the scores. So MCAS is just once a year. How do we measure student learning all year long? So as I described, of course, MCAS is last year's students. Teachers need data about the students in front of them. These are some of the assessments that you'll hear about in particular during budget season. So at the elementary level, we use DIBELS. That's the assessment measure by which, among other things, we determine whether students are showing an indication of dyslexia and other reading supports. We use Lexia and STAR assessments multiple times a year, overseen by coaches in those areas and data debriefed in groups. You'll see that in a bit. At the middle school, we use I-Ready for that. And at the high school, we use primarily local assessments and we lean heavily on MCAS data. Okay. Accountability data. So there's MCAS. And then the state has this complicated algorithm by which they take the MCAS data and they integrate in year to year change. Attendance at the high school level, AP completion, not scores, but completion. And they take the lowest twenty-five percent scoring students and wait their growth versus all students. And they give you this percentage. And then we have the data to look at. So these are the school accountability percentiles overall for each of the schools. They're good. There's room for growth in some areas, but overall very strong. Here are the things I described that it includes. So MCAS is just one piece of it. When you hear on the news district is being in receivership from the state, it's because they're scoring low on their accountability data and the state steps in to give them support. We're not our case at all, but that's how they reach that determination. I know this is teeny tiny. The takeaway at Doian is that the accountability data shows that students in the lowest performing subgroup need some support, but overall they're all doing very well. Notably, we got a zero out of four for attendance at Doian. So this is my request for families to think about if you're going on a vacation. Even if it's very educational, the state doesn't discriminate between an excused or unexcused absence. It's all unexcused at a certain extent. So I think some of this factor is sometimes families taking trips and it counts against us for what that's worth. So just pointing that out. Everything else looks good. Say again? I'm highlighting that in the accountability data, we receive up to four points for attendance. And if your attendance dips below the former year's level and a mark determined by the state, you get subtracted points. And so we got docked four points for attendance at Doian, which is interesting. So we're going to dig into that. That was really the only area of concern. Everything else is very strong. Winthrop. Again, I know that's teeny tiny. Winthrop in particular showed very strong student growth percentile, meaning even if students were not yet up to a meets expectation, they had grown tremendously from the previous year and that's fantastic. A very high SGP. Good attendance. And so that's looking strong. The middle school scores overall dipped a bit. However, their SGP grew, which to me means that those particular groups of students might not test well or might need more support. However, they scored a lot better than their like cohort did the previous year. So that's very good. So we're proud of that. Attendance looks good, three out of four. And lastly, the high school. So the high school scores have been very static year to year. And because of that, when we got our achievement in our growth points, they were lower. So it's not necessarily that the students didn't do well. They're just scoring as cohorts the same over time. Chronic absenteeism of four out of four for absenteeism at the high schools, very good. And we scored one out of four for advanced coursework completion. That's something we'll look at. We have a lot of students take AP and the state doesn't base that score on how well they do on AP exams. It's on growing participation. So if you have friends in other districts, you might hear some districts have a push for all students to take an AP. That's because they believe that's valuable, but also because it pushes up that particular score because it's about how many kids participate, not how well they do. So different beliefs about that. And we'll talk a minute how we're working to move up overall that accountability data score at the high school. So we use MCAS in lots of ways. I won't go over this, but just know that it's a piece of the pie of the data that we look at. And it's certainly very important, but it's not the only piece. When we come in a couple of weeks as an admin team to do the strategy for district improvement and school improvement plan presentation, also very exciting. You'll hear us talk about the MCAS scores and the connections that we see and how it informs those plans. So one way we do is we have data meetings. This was one we were particularly proud of. This is a really exciting video that both faculties in both schools watched of myself, the reading specialists, our math and our new literacy coach, thank you to the PAIN Committee, and all our elementary admin, all in the same room, having a meeting where we looked at fictitious data because we didn't want to use real students' names. But we filmed ourselves having it and showing teachers. This is one way to have a discussion about data. And teachers, actually starting next week, will have scheduled data meetings at the elementary level where they're meeting to talk about data with our coaches, which is fantastic. We've come a long way in that regard and it's working. Other pieces we are doing, we're showing, seeing so much success already with our wit and wisdom curriculum. We have a new elementary literacy coach. It is so beneficial to have her. You'll hear about her during budget season. Tenth grade level, we're working to revise the tenth grade curriculum to make it include more text sets. So text set is when it's a common theme. So say peace and you have poetry and you have a TED Talk and you have a novel and you have a speech and you have a script. And that is more of a match to MCAS and more of a match to the state's standards. We also have a supplemental course right now. It's an elective for tenth graders who might need more support gearing up towards MCAS. It's a high level, high interest course that's been going really well. Math, we continue to build on the successes of IM and we're continuing to look at our algebra curriculum and especially at the eighth grade level. This is the Ipswitch Curriculum Review Cycle. It matches the focus on data and shows where we have teams of teachers and myself looking at particular content areas every year. And it's, it's been showing improvement year to year in how we're doing that MCAS. That's great. So again, you can get any of this information. This is all publicly accessible. You can go there and click assessment or you can Google it. Your child's MCAS report was mailed home October third. That gives you lots of information. And school and district report cards are also available online. Another way to search for it. And this is all information that you can see and look at. And a giant thank you. This represents the work of so many people, our teachers and our students and our parents and administrators. I'm happy to answer any questions and this is available if anyone wants to look at the data in a more detailed way.
I have a question, not, oh, sorry, Jen. No, go ahead. Not so much about the data, but just in terms of how the testing is administered and and sort of how they work up to it. So thinking about third graders who testing before, what kinds of work are they doing in the classroom on computers ahead of time to get them to be able to just utilize this?
That's a good question. Over the past couple of years, our digital learning specialist has done a very comprehensive review with her tech team of our typing curriculum. And as of last year, we implemented a new common typing curriculum and minutes that teachers are using in classrooms so that students are getting experience. Students are coming to us more and more, being able to use iPads and swiping, but MCAS, you type and you manipulate things as you saw on those questions. So there's actually a certain number of minutes that we ask teachers to do to help students with the tech part of it. All of the test questions from previous years are available online. A lot of teachers use them. We don't want to make it be too test prep heavy, but we also want to prepare students for what that experience feels like.
Is that text prep for letters and numbers?
Mm-hmm. Yep. So the assessments they take at the elementary level, it's STAR and they take it in English and in math are aligned to MCAS. They're an indicator of how a student will do. So like that data meeting picture you saw, we were actually looking at data from STAR. Again, fictitious, so we weren't discussing actual students on this video. But looking at, okay, so here's how students scored. They take it three times a year and it's an indicator. And then it actually gives them guided curriculum pathways based on how they performed. And so that's all online for kids too.
And then one more question, just about how the tests are administered in terms of like Jen asked the question like, oh, do I use those keys there? Kids have questions throughout, are teachers able to answer those questions? No help at all?
Nope. Not at all.
For all students regardless of IEP?
If a student has an IEP that indicates they may get specific help on tests, they might be able to, but that's not the norm. Sometimes, again, if it's in a student's IEP, they can get tests read out loud to get some support, but that's not the norm. It is so hard to be a teacher during MCAS because our whole world is helping and we can't in those instances. So it makes it all the more remarkable how well our students do.
Well, it makes me wonder too, again, about students who in third grade, who if they haven't yet tested, they wouldn't know that they wouldn't necessarily need that read out loud to them. So you're sort of figuring that out as they go through this stuff.
That's part of the reason in particular we do the STAR testing because it's in a calmer, low-stress environment and students can experience that. Because of course, we want them to ask their teachers questions. So it's odd all around, but it's a state requirement.
Thank you. Welcome.
Tracy, can we look at slide 19 again? It's the fifth grade science and second engineering.
Fifth grade science.
Yes. I have page 19 on my slide.
Thank you. This one?
Note has a graph.
That one?
Yes. So I wrote a note when you were talking and maybe I misunderstood, but you said that there was steep growth. But this looks like, although both elementary schools look like they really did grow, this slide in particular looks like there was a decline in exceeding expectations and meeting expectations, but growth in partially meeting.
Let me look at this one. I'm noting when I look at this one that it only goes up to 2023. I might have not put the 2024 data in there. I think that's what it is. See how it only goes to 2023?
Ah.
I put in the wrong slide. So I would look at this one, which shows the growth. I'll fix that.
Okay. Oh, I'm glad I.
Good catch.
I've got a few questions. And so this, in one of the earlier slides, you talked about the competency determinations of the score. The scores increased. Like how much did they increase by the needed scores?
So they increased a bit. Yeah, maybe go back to this. So that's about, and it's, you know, related in topic to the ballot measure. So it's about the state saying, and I don't know the exact scores they used to be to the number, but I could certainly look them up. But they substantially raised the score a student would need in order to have their 10th grade MCAS qualify them to graduate. So students can take MCAS multiple times. We don't have a huge group of students who need to do that. Other districts may be different. So they raised the scaled score. And that was about DESI 2023, 2024, that affected last year's 10th graders. Welcome.
Just wanted to comment on those elementary math scores.
They're very good.
Like pretty impressive.
Thank you.
And I know we've had the math coaches for three years?
Have the math coaches. I think we made the shift from two math specialists to two math coaches. And we still have math specialists at our Title I school, which is Winthrop, through Title I during COVID. So it's been a couple of years, yeah. And bringing in data meetings, a lot of sort of math has been very much successful. We pulled it through grade eight. And so we're using it at the middle school now, although they haven't been using it for so many years. And lots of added support for them. So we're very proud of those scores.
Yeah, it'll be interesting to see if those math scores trickle up to the middle school in coming years. I also was just to clarify. So when you're looking at the tables that have, you know, 2021, 2022, 23, 24, those are comparing different cohorts of students.
So comparing different cohorts of students and their percentages, not numbers of kids.
It's not the same cohort that you're following.
Nope, nope. The same cohort data is the SGP, which would just be double a slideshow length. But no, I'm.
I was interpreting it.
Yeah, no, those are achievement. And so then on that accountability data, that big chart, they give a percentage for the achievement, which is this, the scores. And then an achievement for SGP, which is the growth over time. And that's somehow you get to, like we saw at the middle school, where the achievement was a bit lower, but the SGPs were a lot higher. So they scored more highly than their like cohorts of themselves previous years.
Thank you. Welcome. And I wanted you to explain the accountability data. I wanted to understand it better, but you explained it.
Thank you.
Well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question about, this is a good example. How for each color on the graph, they're like then subdivided into four stacks? And that's just to kind of show within that range?
Yeah, it's the years. And so like it's, it's so, must be so tiny for you. So the top one is 2021, bar graph, 22, 23, 24, all the exceeding expectations. So it's the same data, but in a different visual format? Yeah.
That answers my second question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much. Moving on, next we have our vote on the Ipswich Educators Association. Three separate discussions and votes, Unit A, ESP and Para-educator Collective Bargaining Agreements. So at our last meeting on October 3rd, we held an executive session to discuss our strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the IA. And then we heard from the IA on Tuesday that all three contracts passed their ratification vote. Vote. So now we are holding our ratification votes on the contracts. So open, opening up for a motion on subsequent contracts.
Can you do it in three?
Yes, separately.
What's the motion look like for that?
I would suggest, is there a motion to ratify the collective bargaining agreement for Unit A as presented in our executive session?
Okay.
So moved?
Okay, Jen. Second by Haley. Thank you for the discussion. All those in favor? Right, seven. Then against, so the motion passes. Next, is there a motion to ratify the collective bargaining agreement for the ESPs as presented in executive session?
So moved?
By Kate?
Second.
Second by Haley, further discussion. Okay, all those in favor? Eight, seven, seven, zero, motion passes. And lastly, is there a motion to ratify the collective bargaining agreement for the para educators as presented in our executive session?
So moved?
Moved by Haley.
Second.
Second by Jen, further discussion. Okay, all those in favor? I'm counting seven, so the motion passes unanimously.
Can we clap?
Same deal. That's a big deal. Very big process, but overall I think it was obviously productive and I'm overall pleased with that win.
And thank you to our negotiating team on this side. It's a lot of meetings, a lot of work. Thank you.
Good work. Good teamwork on both sides.
So next steps for that, Dr. Blake, is.
So what happens now is that the, what you voted on this evening was simply what would have been bargained differently this time around. And now that will be integrated into the rest of the contract. And then it'll go back and forth for review and signatures. And then it will be implemented. The provisions, the pay provisions are such that they are retroactive. So we'll be working in the business office to start that process. And then there are provisions in each of the contracts that go into effect at different times. So we'll be meeting with the leadership of the IEA to decide on when some of those pieces will go into effect. For example, one of the things that we had talked about was the potential for an additional professional development day in the spring. Does that happen this year or does that take effect next year? We, I think we left that open-ended in the contract. Changing the schedule on Thursdays for the elementary school in terms of what happens during their Thursday early release time and moving their staff meetings from Mondays to Thursdays. That's another piece that we'll have to consider. A number of those pieces.
And then will the housekeeping work that was done by that smaller subcommittee be worked in?
That'll be all integrated into those final documents.
Okay.
All right, next, discussion and vote on a position for a future elementary building project. So the concept of us moving forward by taking a position this fall originated during our summer retreat. And this was further encouraged during our last tri board meeting from both the select board and finance committee. And we've also heard from the strategic planning committee who's asked all town departments to weigh in on possible and anticipated capital projects. So as you all know, we held a two-hour workshop dedicated to this discussion on September 19th and after which we plan to take our vote on this date. We also heard a recap at our last public meeting, an executive summary from the chair of the working group. So tonight, we will begin by going around the room and allowing every participant to make a statement if they choose. And then we will open up to a motion for a vote on our position.
Once again, I'll just read a statement. I'm gonna, my ability to deliberate on this issue in particular of relocating Winthrop School has been called into question due to my home's proximity to the school. Under advice from the state Ethics Commission, I recuse myself from this discussion and abstain from any action on this item. I'm gonna just leave the room while this takes place. And Diana's agreed to let me know when the discussion is over.
So Sasha, would you like to begin?
Yeah, absolutely. So I appreciate everyone that's come to these meetings, that has written to the school committee, not just recently, but over the years that we've been discussing this. It's a very different school committee than who was involved in starting this project now almost eight years ago, right around eight years ago. Over the last year and a half, we've been very open about discussing, considering what the best path for is. And in particular, last month, we had the workshop to discuss the multiple options. What has personally stood out to me mostly is the educational plan and how do we best meet the needs of our students, our administrators, our teachers? Not just now, but when we think five, 10, 50 years into the future, how do we provide the greatest flexibility? And then the second thing is what we've heard from the town. We've asked over and over again since 2016. And every single time, the town has overwhelmingly come back to say that they support a single community school. Based on what we've heard discussed over the last several months, really last year and a half, it's clear to me that a single community school is the best and only viable option for us. Thank you.
Yeah. Clearly, this has been something that's weighed on all of us in this town. And it's been, it's kind of been a long time coming. I've always been a supporter of two schools. For all the arguments that have been made tonight and others, I think they're very viable arguments. Some of the comments that have been made by others about misinformation and disinformation, that is not what's happening here. These are, these are two good arguments on both sides, perhaps valuing different things. But in the end, I hope, sincerely hope, we can have a more civil and robust argument this time without sort of accusing the other side of having some secret plan here. So being now on the school committee, I've sort of struggled with trying to figure out whether or not my past views still hold water. And I think the one thing that has crept up that has scared me the most is not the option of whether to have two schools or one school, but the possibility of nothing happening. All right? And nothing scares me the most because I, I do not think we can continue to limp along with Winthrop the way it is. That, that building is costing us a lot of money. We have heating problems, cooling problems, dripping variety over capacity in many ways. And so I had to really think about, is this what I want or is this what the town needs? And I have come around to the conclusion that what the town needs is a plan, a project that is economically and politically viable. And as much as I wanted the two elementary schools, I cannot see a path forward for that plan. I do not think we can get that plan done and we would be left with option three of doing nothing. And I think that would be the greatest sin we could commit if we, if we ended up there. So I am going to throw my support behind a single school at Doian.
Matt?
Okay. I think that's really well articulated, Matt. I don't know that I can say it better. I will say, I'm obviously I'm new to the committee and I've spent a lot of time these past few months talking with people who were involved in the process the last time around, trying to get caught up, reading through, combing through copious amounts of documents around this. And I came into this. I voted to support one school the last time around because I felt that same charge at that time and knew that if we didn't get behind that decision then, that it wouldn't impact certainly my kids, never mind now the countless amounts of other children who have continued to go through the schools where nothing has happened. And as Pov pointed out with her stats, it's just going to continue to get worse. So I am in agreement with a consolidated school at one site. And I think it's time, I hope we as a committee can start to build consensus as a town around getting excited about the opportunities that we have to solve for the things that people are concerned about that, you know, perhaps two neighborhood schools not having that structure in place anymore. How can we solve for those concerns for the things that people have brought up? And instead of feeling like that's a daunting or divisive topic, I feel like we should be able to collaborate together and get excited about the opportunities and unify our community.
Thank you. Benny?
New information on the cost for model schools by the school committee was gathered. The public was given access to this only two days ago. This model school cost data shows that a 430-student school was built for $38.5 million. With the MSBA funding, the approximate cost based on the MSBA cost data, Ipswich would, it would cost Ipswich $19.6 million for one small model school. Based on this new information, the decision for the public is to either spend $60 million now for one consolidated school or $19.6 million now for one small school and a future small school for approximately $27 million with MSBA funding or $52.6 million without MSBA funding. This model school cost is a game changer. Because of this new model school cost data and the fact that the public only gained access to this information two days ago, I recommend the following. Postponing the vote for the direction of this, of the schools scheduled for tonight until after the feasibility study. Eliminate the two custom-built school option as this cost would be far greater than what the town can afford. Three, provide the strategic planning committee a range of costs, which should include one consolidated custom and model school and two small model schools with and without MSBA funding. My, the suggested range would be 45 million to 75 million. Four, proactively provide the public with all information necessary for the public to make an informed decision. Information placed such as information placed on the elementary school project page and presented at open meetings. Five, hold more listening sessions as public opinion could change based on this new cost information. And six, task the elementary building working group with creating plans for one consolidated school and two small elementary schools. By voting tonight would be a disservice to our town as this could eliminate the, the most financially viable option. Listening sessions should be every time we receive an email, an article. In the newspaper, every time we hear people talking, even if it's not a formal listening session, those are listening sessions, public comment, all of those are listening sessions. So thank you.
Thank you, Jenny.
Should I state my position or I have, I just kind of have a like a follow up? Question to that because I'm not aware of the, that information of the night. That's new information to me. Did that come up at the elementary building project working group?
I think Jenny, the information you provided is your own. You know, analysis and so that I don't, those numbers are not vetted by the school committee.
They're based on the, I took the number that was included in the spreadsheet that Sasha created based on the MSBA information.
Okay, thank you.
It was, I just, I hadn't heard that information before, so I just was. Wasn't sure if that was your analysis or if that was something that was discussed at a subcommittee meeting.
To be clear, I use the number, the $38.5 million for a small model elementary school, which was on the spreadsheet. And I use the, the MSBA reimbursement percentage that we received in 2018 to come up with those numbers.
Was the 38.5 already? Maybe I should just.
I think you can state your position.
My position?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, so I have a lot to say. I apologize in advance. So let's see, as school committee members, we have spent a lot of time collecting data, listening and weighing our options. And I have tried my best to be thorough, transparent and fair throughout this process. And I believe the school committee's priorities have been spot on. Throughout the listening sessions, which I agree, you know, there've been official listening sessions, but we've been listening all along. So there has been a lot of comments and feedback, even, you know, up till this evening. So throughout the listening sessions, workshops and discussions, we have been focused on education cost and the, and a project the community can support. I have heard the concerns about a larger school, some of which include concerns about transportation, students falling through the cracks. The loss of a downtown school, concerns there won't be a small community feel and the loss of student independence without a school downtown. Among others. Those are great things to identify. And we want the community involved to help us find solutions to these challenges, which do have solutions. Our buildings are not okay. And I have heard loud and clear that message from our teachers and the statement from the teachers' union. And I've seen it myself. And I invite and actually beg all community members to get behind the idea of a combined elementary school. And like Haley said, get excited about the possibilities. And try to think not only of your own individual family and situation, but of the bigger picture of all of our students and all of the townwide initiatives before us. So I'm confident that if we come together as a town, we can find a solution that meets the needs of all students as quickly and efficiently as possible. There is no perfect solution. I don't believe there will be unanimity in the town on any solution. But we need to find a path forward. And opposition infighting and yes, undermining our process, which has happened from several community members. Will only kick the can down the road and do our students disservice. So a community school, a large community school, sorry, a large combined school, also a community school. Will meet the educational needs of all students at the same time and not half of the students and leaving the other half of the students waiting years for a new school. A combined school only requires a single project and avoids the risk of having two projects that require multiple votes. Multiple invitations from the mass building authority. And multiple votes from the town to fund projects. I think there's a big risk with that. And I'm not willing to take that risk. A combined school has increased flexibility with all students and staff in the same location. And as has been mentioned, a combined school is significantly less expensive, both to build and also to maintain. We haven't talked a lot about maintaining a building, but it is much more efficient to maintain one building than to maintain two buildings. And cost is not the only factor. I want to make that clear. It's a factor. It's not the only factor. And I am, as a member of the strategic planning committee, I am very well aware of all the projects Ipswich has before us. And I can say cost matters to taxpayers. It's not the only thing that matters, but it matters and we cannot build a school without taxpayer support. And finally, a combined school is a more sustainable option. And sustainability is a value that we've seen throughout Ipswich for the last 10 plus years. So as school committee members, our biggest challenge or our biggest charge as school committee members is to set the direction of the school system and help the district meet its educational goals. And we all have the responsibility as school committee members to provide the best learning environment for all of our students. As well as a commitment to this, to the citizens of Ipswich and their tax dollars. I feel like it's my moral obligation as a school committee member and for all of us frankly, to support a combined school that benefits all students. Gets completed as cost effectively as possible and as quickly as possible. And I don't think we can vote any other way.
Okay, I'll go next. I don't have much to say because I echo most of what has been said. I certainly hear everybody in the community and I know that we all have been and will be affected by this project in some way. And everybody has their own ballot set of reasons for their belief in the path forward. For me, I've been doing lots and lots of research over the years and listening. But I really felt it helpful the way that we went about the workshop and focused on our priorities. I really, I was going to talk a lot about what Matt said about the cost of doing nothing and how that impacts education. All of our students and staff deserve environments that are supportive to learning and they deserve it as soon as possible. When we talk about some discussions that we could have moving forward, I think about districts like Swansky that just opened a school that has two separate wings for upper and lower elementary. And I wonder if we could learn from them as they go through their opening. I think about the school that we toured in Amesbury and how they brought two groups of, two school communities together to create a new sense of community. So I'm excited at the prospect of starting discussions like these now, so we can best prepare for the future of education in Ipswich. If you would like to weigh in, I'm open to that.
You know, as, as the superintendent of schools, you know, I, my job is to do and support whatever the direction of the board is. Personally, I, I support moving toward one facility at the Doian site. I believe that there's still a lot of options in the, in the design of the building that will meet everyone's needs and provide Ipswich with the most flexible use for, for the future. Having a deep understanding now of, of the shape of our current facilities. We're, we're in a world of hurt. We can't wait for another 10 or 20 years to, to think that we're going to be okay in that timeframe to, to be able to build two schools. The buildings are not going to last that long. Our students and staff deserve better now. We're, we're currently wasting millions of dollars on these old outdated buildings that no longer meet modern educational needs. You know, had the building passed in the prior vote, we, that would all be savings. You know, two new roofs, over $2 million just this, this past year, a new boiler. So we're, we're wasting a lot of money. The issues that are, that are facing the, the town, there's a lot of other expenses coming up as, as we see in the strategic plan. I don't see the, the, the long term. I don't, I don't see the, the appetite to, to build two buildings and think that we're going to be successful years down the road to build a second building. At this point, you know, we, we haven't been invited in yet. So I think it, you know, we're, we're, there's going to be opportunity for more in-depth conversations about what, what a building or a site might look like in the future. We've got to do the feasibility study. You know, the, the vote tonight is, is to, to, to signal to the MSBA that we, that we have a direction that we'd like to head and, and that we have. You know, a, a position. You know, we're a long way from a final vote on a project, but from my perspective, you know, one, one school on the Doian site makes the most sense. Educationally, fiscally, and, and certainly from an equity standpoint for our students.
Thank you. From, from my end of the aisle, so to speak, as your director of finance and operations, I'd like to speak to the operational piece. I think those of you spoke about the finance piece quite, quite articulately and certainly plays a, plays a big, plays a big part. On the operations side of things, I think the argument around equity is, is, is the strongest. The type of things that, that, that one building would provide over, over. Over, over two, especially for the period of time which there would be one modern building and the other not so. From, from what we provide to the students and to the community. There would be a, a significant difference in, in the cost of operations for, for, for utilities, heating, hot cooling, technology. Educational resources, food, food services. Can't, can't go under, understated either. We would have a very, a modern kitchen facility and, and one that is really costing us a, a fair amount. We would have a modern, you know, teaching, art teaching spaces. We would have a, a modern outdoor campus that we wouldn't be needing to maintain two, two campuses versus one. We would have a different set of, of, of transportation routines for a drop off and for, and for pickup, which I think from, again, I've often heard as your transportation person. You know, often, you know, concerns about, about, you know, you know, how, how drop off works, how pickup works. And there'd be an opportunity there certainly to, to change up by the transportation routines. So, you know, those sorts of things from the operational side of things really lend themselves well to some, some efficiencies. And certainly a, a single campus on the, on the Doian, on the Doian site makes, makes in my view, a, a great deal of sense. On the cost side of things, there's certainly, there's been plenty of, plenty of data shared there. About what, what else has, has occurred in this, in the state and what is currently the, 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 the environment, the state environment. One thing that is for sure is that while we haven't, as Dr. Blake said, we haven't been invited into the process yet. But should we be invited into the process? The one thing that is for sure is that there would be, it would be a reimbursement only for, for a one school option. We would not get reimbursement for two, for two schools. We would only get reimbursement for one school. I think that is a fair thing to say without having a crystal ball or without being a, a participant in the voting of the, the MSBA. I think that MSBA is fairly clear in that, in that, in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you all. So we'll open it up for a motion on a position and as always, there'll be an opportunity to vote in favor, opposed or abstain.
I motion to postpone this vote on the direction of the school, on the school building project until after more listening sessions. And after feasibility study, given the new, new cost information.
Here's the motion. I'm not hearing a second. Okay.
I move that the school committee take the position to support a single building project that creates a unified community school for all Ipswich Elementary students at the site of the current Paul F. Doian Memorial School.
Second. Move by Sasha, second by Haley. Are there discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Let me see, one, two, three, four, five. Opposed. One, okay. The motion passes five to one. All right, so.
I don't know if it's a suggestion, but a, it's a suggestion. I don't know if it's possible, but I would like to look into visiting a school such as Swan Scott in the next few months. And possibly, and this is the part I'm not sure if it's possible, potentially inviting some community members to come with us. I'm just throwing that out there. I would, I would like to, I, I learned a lot from the schools we visited. We visited big schools, we visited, I don't know if they would say small schools, some may, small to medium schools. We visited three schools as a committee and I learned a lot. Just about the way the education is different, the way the schools are designed nowadays, the way some districts have chosen to orient things. And I just think it would be really valuable to, I, I, we can open it up to the community and have 50 people. And obviously we'd have to go after the school day, so people didn't need background checks. But I just think that's something that might be a useful exercise to sort of open some people's eyes to, to the possibilities of a new school.
I can certainly make that phone call and see what's possible.
I don't know if Swan Scott's the best choice, but I'm, I know that we have a lot of, we have a big spreadsheet of schools. And, and so I know that one, I believe, had a design similar to what has been discussed. Not that anything's finalized, but I just think that might be a nice opportunity to have some community members come with us to see.
I thought the, I thought the tours we did last year were incredibly informative. We saw multiple different. We intentionally saw multiple different options. I thought that was great to see. I think for Sue Swan Scott certainly, and it's something we can talk about. Are there other ones that we should do over time as well? Yeah.
And I think when you say community members, like representatives from the schools, teachers.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
Informative.
Maybe, maybe people who don't support the decision we just made. But we'd have to see who was interested. I'm not sure. I just think it might be a good opportunity.
Yeah, interesting. Okay, so that's good. That was going to flow into, we're going to talk about next steps. So thank you for that. I think that, I imagine the elementary building project working group will likely meet again. I think there's some follow up to do. Including starting to really hone in on the cost estimate that we want to provide to the strategic planning committee. Okay. I'm going to share the outcome of this vote with the chairs of the select board and finance committee. And I believe that we have the chair of the strategic planning committee amongst us, so they are aware. And I think communications is going to share a little bit later about how we can communicate this to the MSBA and the community. Okay, I'm going to move on, but I'm going to text Jen. Get her back in here. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Good night.
Thank you. Thank you. Sure. Take a five minute. Come back at eight thirty-seven-ish.
Mics are on.
The mics stay on.
Hi. Are you guys cold? You're cold? Or it's almost getting there. Like, we need multiple spaces.
Probably started by taking the ACs out.
Yeah, is that it?
I'm going to make a note.
I can't feel that, I'm like shaking.
Would you like gloves? I have gloves. It's going to be in the seventies on Monday and Tuesday, right?
I think.
It's going to be like seventy, it's going to be like seventy Saturday and Sunday, and then like seventy-four, Monday or Tuesday. So maybe we will. We have a finely tuned system of checking.
You know exactly what they're doing, yeah.
You have a metering system to know when to take. It's a very complicated spreadsheet by building, by quadrant of the building, which floor, because how temperature rises. The third floor is higher, it's warmer than the first.
They're going to dial it in, huh?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Got a lot going on over here.
I think we should keep messing with the organization of this table until we find the right combination.
There's going to be a hot pocket over there. Let's do find it.
Heat and acoustics, there's so much to balance. Oh, yeah. I can't feel it.
A little hand warmers, yeah. Yep.
To contradict the hole in the window. Well, and the older the building, the less right it is. Do that open.
Sixties.
Sixties.
All right. We are back. All right, next up is policy update. Here is only one. So, to be fair, I would give credit to the Policy Subcommittee who spent seventy minutes on this one policy. Right? Seventy, okay. And it is the draft proposed policy of EBACA, the Environmental Sustainability Policy. So as many remember, the idea was presented early last spring. Then it's gone through many drafts and presentations to staff, community members. And most recently, the Town Waste Reduction Advisory Committee. So they had a lot of feedback and that's what we spent two nights ago doing was kind of merging what we could into our document or just taking some of theirs, moving some of ours around. So what you see in the folder is the most recent draft, but we wanted to bring it here, get some feedback, and then potentially send it back out to the groups that had weighed in on it in the earlier go-arounds and then hopefully vote on it at some point this fall. So, does anybody have any questions or comments on it?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Shocker. I don't have as many comments as I had on the last policy. But I like it. I think it looks really strong. I'm curious, what was the gist of the Waste Reduction Advisory? Was it comprehensive or was it certain? Did we take a lot of their recommendations or was, I don't know, what was the?
Yeah, I would say it was very comprehensive and that was, one thing that we looked at is like that fine line between policy, like procedure. So some of the details that were in that, we didn't feel necessarily needed to live in our policy. Like I talked about what color waste barrels to have and we typically don't go to that level of detail in our policies.
Yeah, okay.
I can also recirculate their policy if you want to see like what level they had.
No, it's fine. And I believe you said there's a food service employee on the Wellness Committee? Okay. Facilities, I'm just, so similar to the last policy, I feel like this touches a lot of areas of the school that are going to need to implement pieces of this. So obviously food service, there's a facilities piece that had to do with like, I believe it was, I didn't read it since yesterday and now I forgot, but I believe there's something about purchasing and, you know, products that they're using and that sort of thing. So that, has that been?
A lot of it we already.
We already do, okay. That's what I thought, I remember from a school tour that we're already doing a lot of that stuff. So I just want to make sure they were on board.
We did, the Food Service Director and last year's Facilities Director both had viewed it last spring and sent feedback or said, yeah, it looks fine.
Okay. And then another sentence that sort of jumped out at me was integrating these topics. And now I'd have to go back and see exactly where I found that. But integrating these topics into existing courses of instruction at all grade levels. I was just curious to what extent. That just seemed a little, I guess, strong to me or I'd love it if it happened. I just don't want to create something that. What?
Kind of wonder if that's not happening to some degree already too. I mean, although I don't want to speak out of turn, but.
Yeah, but I think that was my understanding too.
I guess I was just, so the header to that, it is in section three, page, I don't know. Section three, bullet D. So the header of that says, encourage the expansion of awareness, education and engagement on climate change, environment and sustainability issues by incorporating the following.
Be part of the science curriculum.
Okay, so just, I didn't know if maybe there should be a little bit like as feasible or if possible instead of, but a little softer language. That was my only feedback on that, possibly.
As appropriate?
Yeah. I mean, I think we should strive to do it. I just don't want it to, it seems a little like we will do this at all.
Integrate?
Yeah.
Is it bullet or?
D, D.
Okay.
I think when we integrated these two policies, or I don't know if integrated is the right word, but that was a lot of what we discussed was trying to make sure that we were trying to live up to that spirit without pigeonholing us into something. So I think that's legit feedback.
And I think when it says encourage, it's kind of like that. You know, it's like defaults, you know, all of these things we're going to encourage them to do. But yes, may as well, may as well clear it up.
Yeah. And then, sorry, one other thing. I didn't know if there's any consideration about adding something about new buildings to make sure they meet certain standards or anything like that.
So, good question. I think the first draft of this had like a small section on that. Then when it came to the school committee at the time, there was a discussion, a member recommended not kind of going to that level, like keeping it to like what is kind of controlled on the inside. If this group feels they want to put that back in, then we could certainly discuss it.
It was just an idea. I also think the MSBA, you know, when we get in, they have pretty strict sustainability criteria that you have to meet. So that might already happen automatically, I'm not sure. And I think there's some level of.
Need certification.
Yeah, you can do, you can do more and then you maybe get more reimbursement, but I didn't know if we wanted anything. I'm fine about it, it's just an idea.
I like the spirit of it, the outside of the new building. You know, construction repairs, that you're considering these things. This sort of reads to me that way, that if we were to do something major, that we would follow this policy. So I do feel like we're covered there.
I guess it references the resolution for zero carbon energy by 2040. Oh, if you, if you have some proposed language you would like to.
No, I just was curious if it had been discussed. I'm okay to not have it in there.
Yeah, I kind of see both sides, but I agree, like I think in spirit, it's touched upon.
Yeah. And then one other one, I noticed there was mention of a school sustainability task force that I hadn't heard about before.
Hmm. That came up a lot.
Yeah. So, yes, yeah.
Like, whose idea was that?
So it, it came up in one of, I believe it was the middle school, when I went and talked to them about the policy in the spring, the middle school council. I think there was somebody who sits on that committee that said that in the district that they had worked in, they have like some oversight. So like it's one thing to have a policy, but it's another thing to make sure that it's actually being followed through. So we went round and round and talked to Dr. Blake about what he felt like would be effective but also reasonable in the workflow.
So it wouldn't be the Wellness Committee? You'd think.
This is not wellness. This is not at all related to wellness. This is totally separate thing.
I think one of the things we talked about is like how much time this task force would need to volunteer, provide. And, you know, we talked about, it's really just, not just, but observations, you know, throughout the time, throughout the year. You know, maybe encourage if somebody else has an idea at the school, like to go to a certain person so they could write it down and have a list, an ongoing list, observations.
And then maybe they would meet like December and.
We have twice a year.
It'd be twice a year, yeah.
Yeah.
And maybe integrating the high, middle, middle school, high school green teams into that somehow. I think that's yet to be kind of ironed out. There's some natural symmetry there.
So that would be four people, one from each building and that's it.
I wouldn't necessarily limit it to just four people. I mean, it could be multiple people in a building if they wanted to be part of it.
We have it representative or representatives from each building.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a little loose. And I mean.
Who sets that up?
I think it'll be up to Dr. Blake and then potentially community members, you know.
I was wondering if it was staff versus community.
I think.
Either would be okay.
I'm sorry?
Is there, did you get to a place where you were determining whether it would be staff or versus community members or either or?
I think it would mainly be staff in the building, but it certainly could be community members.
It's about having like some, you know, the people in the building are going to be the ones that can really report on and then kind of work towards that change more directly. And, you know, thinking big, thinking ahead. Some years down the line, we might say, that's so funny, we had to have this policy all those years ago because maybe many of these things will just be what are we're all doing.
Right. Obviously, just wondering if we needed to have anything in there about who sets that? Like a school sustainability task force will be formed by the superintendent. Like how does that happen?
I like that wording. Do you like that wording?
We have that language in other policy, you know, by the superintendent or their designee. Like is it something that might be set up at the beginning of the school year? And then maybe there's, like you said, a form or a point person that gets feedback and then schedules the meeting. I don't think it has to be you, but schedules a meeting at the end of a semester and at the end of the year.
Right, because otherwise it would just drop off if no one's like.
Well, I think we're going to look at this in three years and be like, oh, we didn't do that.
Yeah, right, right.
That's it.
Thank you.
It looks, it looks good.
I just want to add something I meant to add at the policy meeting. Is that the, because the, the policy, the document that we were working off of had a lot of great ideas and a lot of detail. Is it possible to add at the bottom of that policy to say, you know, visit X website for examples of how to implement this or?
So, I think, I love that idea. We could potentially include it as a reference, but for them, it was a draft policy for us. So that, like, so I think we'd have to kind of iron that out with them. But if they wanted to like have. for us. So that, like, so I think we'd have to kind of iron that out with them. But if they wanted to like have their own, you know, workflow for the town or however they want to do it, right, official within their group, then we could reference it. That's a great idea. All good? All right. Next. Vote to dispose of school-owned property wheelchair accessible van. Go ahead, Tom.
Thank you. So the, the request before you is that, excuse me, the, the school district owns a 2008 Ford McConnell line van and has, has owned it since, since the time. Has over about 260,000 miles on it. It has been in disrepair, on and off over the last few years. The district has put into it to keep it, to keep it rolling. Last spring, the staff that used the vehicle, it's a, it's a vehicle used within the special education department at the high school. And it just became, became in, in real disrepair. We had it evaluated by a mechanic over the summer, who advised that it, that it really be, really be, you know, discontinued from use. Both from a mechanical point of view as well as a safety point of view, more importantly, that it's really beyond, it's a useful life. So the request before you tonight is to allow us, well, first, the request is to, based on the administration's recommendation, that you declare it a surplus, you know, a surplus of asset and allow us to dispose of it. As, as far as we have, we have sort of swapped in one of the other vehicles that gets, you know, we swapped in a 2017 Ford Transit van. That has the, for, for its use in the, in the interim. And there's been a sharing of that, which between the summer programming and so far this year has been, has been working. So this, this, at this time, doesn't come with a recommendation for a replacement. That may become a part of the budget process. Special education department having a new special ed, you know, director will be having some of those conversations during the budget process. But at this time, it's allowing us to properly dispose of the, of the vehicle and make, make the necessary arrangements within the, within the, the current inventory of, of vehicles. I had, I had put in, what I had added onto the consent agenda, which isn't a consent agenda item, I just didn't want to plop in its own page. But on the consent agenda page, I put in a draft emotion for your, for your consideration in making, if this was something the committee wanted to move forward on.
Great. I'll just add, we have, we discussed this a couple.
We did.
In a couple of budget.
The last budget and facilities subcommittee, we discussed this.
Like a very routine and logical thing to do.
Okay.
So maybe I should then move to, move that the school committee declare that the district's 2008 Ford Econo line van as surplus and beyond repair and authorize the director of finance and operations to effect the disposition of this aspect, asset consistent with state law and town procedure.
Second.
Okay, move by Kate, second by Jen, further discussion. All right, all those in favor? Okay, thank you. And Tom, you're up again for our finance update.
So the, the finance update this evening really revolves around the Naresco policy on, on how to, how to pay, or pay down the depending debt that would come from, from that, from that project. Recall that the, the second meeting of the month is not typically a finance meeting because we, you would have heard the finance agenda as the month closed. So the, the, the first meeting in November will have the October close, that sort of thing. So there isn't in your packet, obviously, a October finance report. The month is still in, in its halfway point. But certainly, so what, what I've been asked to do is to, to review and to make some talking points on the, on the draft of policy for the, for the debt repayment for the Naresco project, should that move forward, both at town meeting and the subsequent, you know, ballot vote. About a month ago, Dr. Blake and I met with the town manager and the town finance, I directed to talk and at that point, some fairly broad strokes about what they were, they were anticipating for this, for the, for this, for this project, as well as how a, how a policy would, would be drafted and engaging, obviously, the select board and the town finance committee and ultimately us, or, or you folks, I, I should say. So the policy that you have in your folder or the draft policy that you have in your, in your folder essentially speaks in, in broad strokes to how the town would go about paying back whatever the, whatever the cost of the Naresco project comes, comes to be. There is, you know, the town meeting warrant article that we've, we've read, it's going to be discussed and, and voted next week. And then at the ballot box, should it move forward. So there will be a price tag put on that that will, that will allow the, the, the town, that will authorize the town to, to issue debt in whatever that amount is, the, and create a special purpose stabilization fund into which other funds will be placed in order to pay the annual debt service down. The, the creative elements with this, with the policy draft is how to fund the stabilization fund to pay the Naresco bill over the course of time. And, and this policy is saying that there were a couple of options before it. Certainly the first being using the, the debt exclusion if it passes, because you're going to be, have to fund the project at a, at 100%. But you may not have to draw it down at 100%. You draw down what is needed each year. Secondly, this, the select board could decide to use free cash or projected, you know, budget savings from the cost of operations from one year to the next as costs in theory would, could get lower. Or any sort of grants or other incentives that the state or private industry may, may, may bring forward. How that would specifically work, or at least at this point in, in the process, is that the, 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 the cost of, of funding the Naresco payment from one year to the next would be based on the prior year's assumed or known savings. Now, the, the only guarantee in the savings, as I'm sure you, you all know, is in consumption, not in price. So because there are very, there are many variables around the cost. And in fact, there's no guarantee that the cost will actually go down. Consumption is what's guaranteed to go down, right? If we have a very cold winter, for example, the cost of heating is going to go up versus a relatively mild winter. That we, so there's no control necessarily over that. Secondly, there will be no control over what the rates are. Those are set by the utilities, both in town and the, and outside utility. So there's no guarantee that the cost of providing these, these services, these utilities will go down. But should it go down, or even if it doesn't go down, there's going to be a cost based on the prior year's usage. The third, I think it's the third bullet here in the policy speaks that, that the select board will propose a budget each year to, to determine what the debt service cost is for the next year. And that cost will come off the top. What off the top means, which would be to the towns, obviously, to, to everyone's, you know, benefit, I suppose, is that off the top means that the, according to this policy, the select board is considering all town departments and all town buildings to be one. There isn't necessarily a division between schools and town and so forth. So the cost of, of paying the, the Naresco debt from one year to the next will come off the top of what the town administration puts for as far as what available funds there are to fund the next year. That comes in at least two parts, meaning what, what, what the tax levy is anticipated to be. And, and whatever, what, what other receivables may be, you know, excise tax and construction costs and those types of things. So it'll have a full look of what all resources are. As you, as you know, we typically get that assessment or that allocation, rather, somewhere in December. Certainly, you know, well in time for our consideration to propose to you folks come the end of January in broad strokes, what the next school year budget may look like. And what has been a traditional practice, that the town very generously gives the school department an allocation of about 60 to 65% of the, of the overall available resources between the tax levy and, and other sources. But before they divide out the 65, 35 or 60, 40, whatever the cost may, whatever the allocation may be, before they divide that out, they would take this cost off the top. So say the, 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 the total town budget, including the schools, is this, is, is a $70 million ask for next year. I'm making that up, right? It's probably about right. And the cost of the, of that, of the next year's Naresco bill is, is say $1 million. I'm making that up, too. That means that the, the new 100% is now $69 million. So we then get the 60% of 69 million versus 60% of, of the 70 million. So we get, we will continue to get under this policy, the, 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 the percentage allocation that the town has traditionally given us. But it's, it's, it's that percentage of a lower number. So that's, that's what the off the top sort of, sort of a piece means, that it's the, the, the cost of doing business for all utilities is considered in the aggregate for all town buildings, including the four that we maintain and run. And, and I think so, that's certainly an, an important piece. So that's what the off the top, you know, piece means. The, the other thing that I think is, is important to make, you know, note of that when we are, when we are budgeting for the cost of utilities for our four buildings from one year to the next, there may or may not be a reduction in, in, in cost. Again, going back to the, the guarantee is for lower, lower consumption, not lower rates. Because neither Naresco nor any of us can guarantee what the rates from utilities will be. So we would, we, we would go about to, hopefully, there was, hopefully, we would see a reduction in, in, in the expense of running the utilities for the four buildings. And, and but once we got our allocation with the, with the select board making the, the determination for what available resources it will use to fund the stabilization fund to then pay the bill, we would continue as we have to, to bring forward a budget to properly fund utilities for the four school buildings. So that's, the, the policy makes, makes, you know, it makes, you know, good sense from a financial perspective. One of the things that I learned in speaking with the, with the town manager specifically, you know, about this and doing some, some research on my own, was that this sort of policy, while it's certainly new to Ipswich, this concept is new, this is fairly common, our practice for, for other communities that have such a, such a project in place, that really this sort of structure isn't breaking new ground in the financial world from, from bond councils and debt service providers. This is, this is, this is a fairly well-known practice. So there's some appreciation that we're not really, we're, we're really not, you know, you know, pioneering, so to speak.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions?
I just have a couple. Is there an anticipated timeframe for when Naresco would be paid off?
It would be a 20 years. So, so what, what you're being asked to do is to, is to vote to allow debt to go out for 20 years. It could be paid off lower in, in any given year. If there are incentives and there's lots of variables there, but it would be no more than 20 years.
Awesome. Okay. So to see the cost savings, could we, would, could somebody just go from what our usage was before Naresco and compare it to the current rates versus what our usage is now or will be after Naresco begins and compare it to the current rate? So then we'd see what the difference is and what the savings would be.
Yes. And, and I believe, although I've not been to all the Naresco presentations, hardly, only been to one or two, I think that they have done some of that analysis.
Sure they did. Yeah.
So there's a, there's a booklet, I'm not sure where it is. I've seen it in hard copy, which I can certainly share. That, that, that has some of that analysis broken out in, in one of, one or two of their proposals that they, that they.
The whole investment grade audit is on the town website. It's like,
Yeah.
Right when you go on the town website, there's like an orange box with 3A info and there's an orange box for Naresco that brings you to the whole audit. I mean, it's a, I think it's actually the executive summary, but there's lots of tables in there that have a lot of information.
I just thought it would be a good, simple way of explaining how to get the, the calculation for a person to figure out what the savings is, right?
I was in, was anticipating doing, doing something, you know, like that as part of the budget presentation. Should it pass town meeting and then should it pass the, you know, the, the town vote, it's going to be something that you're going to be asking the administration to attend to. Maybe not, it's maybe not hit the books in fiscal '26. But it'll, it'll, it will probably be real in '27 or certainly by '28. So it's something that we'll be prepared to look at should it pass.
Tom, I'm thinking about the, that the select board determines the budget that's taken off the top. Considering we have four buildings, should the school committee or you personally be part of that discussion before it's determined townwide? Do you have a perspective on that? I'm, I'm mulling over myself. Curious if you've thought about it.
I honestly haven't. I, you know, that, that, since the project is for all town, you know, all public buildings, publicly owned buildings and the schools are, are included to, I think there's real value that we're not sort of separated out and dealing with this on our own, that we're considered as part of the whole.
Sorry, I mean to separate, I just mean part of the, like at the table as that.
Oh, oh.
As the numbers be determined. That, yeah, no, not to do it independently. I would not recommend that. Just that there's a voice from the school committee or yourself, part of that. That, that's what I'm thinking. Curious to hear your opinion, or perhaps that's something we should discuss.
No, I think that's a viable, that's a viable play. I mean, I'm sure as, as, is, is, again, if it all passes, it's going to unfold relatively quickly. When I say that, probably within 12 months, getting ready for fiscal '27. So I'm sure the mechanics of how it works isn't meant to be designed here, but that's a great point.
Oh, okay. That's fair. I was reading this, this is how it would be laid out. Okay. If that's something to be discussed in the future, then that's fine. We can take it up then.
But I think, I think what this speaks to is that the select board as, as, in their role or in their oversight role for all municipal buildings, they're going to drive this. Whether we as a school department, I contribute.
Yeah.
Where they're considering us as the same. These are my words, that, you know, that they're going to, they may or may not have the police chief at the table to talk about the police station's cost.
Makes sense. Yep.
So that, you know.
Okay. Appreciate it. And the, the first part, totally agree with the second part. Maybe that comes up at chair's meeting or probably not for tribal, but something for us to consider later. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. I appreciate just walking us through it. And I know you and I had a phone call today. So as the chair of the budget subcommittee, I wanted to make sure that I had reached out to the budget subcommittee to make sure we, at least we had reviewed this draft policy. And then Tom and I talked to me and I, I felt reassured that you feel comfortable with this policy in its current state. And, you know, that you had met with the town manager, you had met with the town finance director and, and feel comfortable as well as bond, bond council. So this, I feel like we can confidently let the select board know that we've sort of vetted this and looked at it and, and discussed it with our finance director and feel comfortable with the draft policy as written.
My, that is a general sentiment.
That's my opinion, based on the, I'm trying to speak for all of us.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay. All right, next. Now here for the superintendent's administrative report.
So, seems like eons ago is our last school committee meeting, but it was only two short weeks ago. In between, I met with our tech department to just get their, a monthly update from them. They actually have all been out the last two days, attending the Mass Q conference down at Gillette. Gives them an opportunity to see what's out there in terms of systems and technology upgrades and, and things like that. See what the, meet with our vendors and spend time. It's actually professional development for them in a lot of ways. So they're, they'll be back tomorrow. I had a meeting with the YMCA stakeholder group. It's a community group that Chris Bevelacqua runs. We, we meet quarterly, just to talk about community issues in general, and, and see what each other is working on as, as big issues. So it's represented by the, the, the food banks, the, the housing people, town employees, and myself. We, so we, we met last, last week. Met with Tom Gallagher for my monthly athletic update with him. There's actually a great article that was in the newspaper either tonight or last night, in the Salem News regarding our football team. Haven't had a chance to read it word for word. I skimmed it, and it was, it was a great article. So encourage you to look, look at that. I attended a school violence webinar that was put on by the, by the state. Last Monday, we had the IEF, the monthly IEF meeting, where we reviewed a number of grant proposals that were coming forward. And then I had a stakeholder meeting with folks in the community that were looking to expand our extended day program to the middle level, and running it out of the church. So we're, that, that's going to be moving forward. We hope to have something off the ground in, in November to kick that off. And then just since last Tuesday, I've been in crisis response mode. So everything got shelved over the last week and a half. Just, you know, basically trying to oversee sort of the crisis response and communication around that, and frankly, just making sure that our staff and kids are taken care of and, and doing okay. Tonight was the services from four to seven. It was, it was a tough night for a lot of people, tough evening. So tomorrow morning, I'll have, you know, counselors will be on hand to, to support folks, and we'll see how the rest of the evening went. The, the turnout for the family and, and just each other has been, has been tremendous around that. And, you know, we're, classes are more or less back to, to functioning. I won't say normal, but, you know. So we'll, you know, we'll continue to get back into the, into the routine of things as, as we go forward. We did postpone Spirit Week, the homecoming dance, to a later date, until it just didn't, didn't feel right for obvious reasons. So be looking at those things. John and Leanne and I met with the T's of mom and stepdad last night for a while, yesterday afternoon, after school, and had, had a great conversation just about different things and, and moving forward. So they'll be, you know, we have a, a direction, and, and she feels very supported by the, by the school and, and all of us that have, you know, gathered around her during this time. And then the only other thing I wanted to talk about, in light of our earlier conversation this evening, was, as you know, we have issues at, at Winthrop with that one classroom, room fifteen. As you know, I, I reported out the last, the last school committee meeting. We had the state come in, do, you know, and look at it. Excuse me. He gave us some, some pointers around what to, what to do and what to look for. We've essentially moved that classroom out completely. They took over the art room. So art is now being taught in other classrooms. We tore up the carpet. We had to have a, a company come in and remove all the adhesive that was on the carpet. The carpet's only two years old, and it goes down on a slab, so it was, it was like a, like a sticky glue that, it's supposed to stay that way, because these carpet tiles, you can pop them out and replace them. So we actually had, I, I think what they did was they ended up grinding the floor, just to get it down to the concrete. So that's all done. Brad indicated that there are signs of moisture coming from the concrete slab, so now we've got to explore that and see what, what the issue is there. And then we're looking at some different adhesive to, to put, you know, to either form a barrier and be able to put something back down, or just put tile down in there. Our next steps are to look outside the building, because that corner of the building, where the, where the slab ends and the building starts, the dirt is actually piled up above where the building, the side of the building is. So I think we may need to start pulling that away, so that there's better, better drainage, and that the water isn't seeping into the, the cement there. We've, we've got to keep plugging away at it till we figure out what it is. I'm not convinced that it was the, the carpet necessarily, yet. So before I go tearing up the other two classrooms, the carpet put down at the same time, we've got to figure out this, this one first. So, you know, just another example of dumping significant amounts of money into a building that we shouldn't even be in today. So, very frustrating for everybody involved, especially the teachers that are displaced.
And the students at a kindergarten level, for the disruption for that age group is-
Right.
And how many older?
Oh, sorry. No, no, go ahead. Is the older present in the other classrooms as well?
No. No.
And the students have been out of that classroom for?
Three, three weeks now.
Three weeks?
I think it's three weeks. Three weeks, yeah.
With no-
Two or three weeks. I'm sorry.
No, no, it's okay. I'm not trying to put you on this. I mean, a while.
I don't know.
And it's caused the district.
No, it's several weeks. I want to say two or three.
I think it's two, because you reported out, it had just happened at the last meeting here, right? So that was two.
Yeah.
And it was that next morning where you had to move them out.
Yeah.
Can I ask about a status update on the draining situation out back at the playground at Winthrop as well?
What?
The, the drain, like, the issue with the drain out there?
Yeah, so, we, the way that the, the drain system works, and the, just the, the flow of everything, everything comes down off the playground. And so a lot of the wood chips and all the stuff from the playground ends up in the drain, and they were significantly clogged. And so that was, there's a number of issues going on over there. And so we had them in on Tuesday, I think, to, to start the work. And they couldn't get it all done. So they were actually back on site yesterday, to, to finish the job, basically cleaning all the drains and clearing all the blockages, so that there wasn't anything backed up. Because what ends up happening is, when it rains hard, those drains don't work properly, and that whole back area ends up getting flooded out.
So then they can't have outdoor recess?
Well, they, they can, but they just can't access the, the playground, that court area that's there.
They just go around.
Yeah. Yeah, or going in through the classroom doors.
Getting more time on the soccer field, which I think is a silver lining, from what I'm hearing.
Yes.
Silver lining's always good.
I'll just say, I have heard from multiple community members and students about how responsive and thoughtful and just supportive you and the whole district has been around the loss of one of our students. So I just thank, thank you for that. And I know we said that earlier, but I just wanted to let you know that I have heard that from multiple people, just sort of unsolicited, just people telling me that it was handled as best as it could be in a horrible situation.
Two points, one, that, thank you for that. Two points, one, we have, we have good systems and protocols in place. So when, when the incident took place and we had verification, it was, it was literally a matter of, okay, pull up the protocol, here's the things that we need to do, and who we need to call. So it was, that, that made the, the mechanical piece of it a little bit easier.
You don't need to think about what to do next, because you have a protocol almost.
You know, and, and Nemlec has, was outstanding, as I, as I said, you know, I shared all those emails, and then the summary email last week, or the other day, whenever it was. You know, we had a, we had a great outside response as well. And the, our, our neighboring school districts have, and neighboring schools have been wonderful. The, yesterday, yesterday the folks from Winthrop sent goodies to both the middle school, the high school, and to Doian today. Doian sent stuff to the middle and high school. And Central Office sent stuff on Tuesday. Tomorrow, I want to say Rockport, or Gloucester, is sending a, a bunch of stuff for lunch for the, the high school. So, and, and I mean, the, the outpouring is, has been great. You know, other superintendents calling, saying, what do you need? Who can I send? It, it's been, it, it's been great to, to see that, that level of response. Unfortunately, being at it as long as I have, this isn't the first time that I've had to go through this. So it was, and, you know, I think there's, every, every situation is different, and, you know, some of our, some of our counseling staff have also been through it as well. So, and for others, it's, you know, it's, it's completely new territory. Not something you learn out of a book.
Thank you. All right. Next up is Subcommittee Working Group and Liaison Reports. Can I go down the list? Budget, I don't believe, has met since our last meeting, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Communications.
Yes. Communications prepared two documents that are in the folder. The first is the note, excuse me, October newsletter. If you haven't, I'll give everyone a second to take a look at that. In particular, generally the topics and the spirit of it, not intending to word smith here, but in general, if there's anything you see, please let us know. Starting with recognizing that loss in our community, as we just discussed, and update on the contract negotiations. And so we have a little, little placeholder there, recognizing we were voting this evening. So we'll, it looks like it has been updated. Next is the section on the elementary school building project update, providing similar context there as what we've done over really the last year for families that are new, reminding them that we've been at this since April. We submitted the SOI, here's what's included. There's a placeholder for the outcome of the vote, which I will include right now. Additional information on Whittier Tech, and so that anyone that is interested can access and continue to follow more information, particularly as there's been more of a focus on school over the last year. Sort of our roundup from the last month, activities and accomplishments. Also, you see highlighted in yellow there, just a couple of placeholders from items tonight. We'll update that. And then our calendar of upcoming district events.
When will this go out?
The last Monday of the month, is it the twenty-eighth?
The-
Tuesday. Tuesday, sorry. Confirm it Monday.
Twenty-ninth.
So the twenty-ninth. Any thoughts, comments? Sorry, you're still reading. Take your time.
I was just, Jen did this section, I think you can include the specific policies, or you can just say we approved however many, because some months we might approve, like, twenty, maybe, guys? So it could get lengthy.
Yeah, this is my first contribution to this newsletter-
I love it.
On the committee.
So, up to you, or you can see how it lands this month.
Brian, as you're, as everyone's reading, as you're looking, I want to make sure the, the first section that we have in there aligns with communications that you administrators, counselors have been sending. So just, whether in this moment or not, would appreciate your guidance on what's appropriate, and how do we continue to be supportive of families in the community?
I think it looks good. I appreciate the Whittier info. I think it's good, the more we can sort of just keep pushing any information they have out. It's great.
Yeah. And that we, I can't remember when to, me or you, but our, our Whittier rep had sent this information along, as she also has been communicating with the other boards in town. So I think we will be hearing from her more at an upcoming tri board, to be determined. But there's a lot of information that they are doing their due diligence, trying to get out to the communities. So I'm excited that we're able to help be part of that process this time around.
Yeah.
I think it would be, oh, sorry, go ahead.
She's been great at communicating. I think we just need, I, we just might need to give her guidance on who, I, I personally think she should email all three chairs.
She has been, from my experience.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it's been great. And it seems that the other chairs are like, same way appreciative of all this communication.
I, I, this is great. I think that having a quote from her, like, and signed by her, like, with, you know, saying, like, that she wrote it, I feel like would give a connection between her and the community. You know what I mean? Just having her one-line quote, or-
Say, update on Whittier Tech, Whittier Regional Vocational Technical High School from Carol Sullivan, our-
So I wrote it, not that there's much there, but I had her, I sent it to her, and I was like, does this make sense? But maybe we could even include something, like, you know, if, I'll see what the proper chain is, if she would like people emailing her, or like, how we can incorporate her name and make it personal.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, just a little snippet, even if you write it, but she approves it, or something with, like, her name. So people can associate her name. So it's a familiar name.
It's a great idea.
Yeah.
Well, I'll, I'll add that between now and this going out.
Yeah, thank you. Any other comments or questions before we move to the second document? All right, seeing that, the second document that's also in the folder is the open letter to the MSBA. Where we prepared and just updated based on the vote was to notify the MSBA of our discussions over the last year, and in particular, of this evening's vote. We've referenced it as an open letter to the MSBA, because while we will send it to them, we also want to make sure that it's available and published to the, to the town overall, that they're aware of the vote, and us recommitting ourselves to moving forward with the MSBA. Give everyone a minute to take a look at that. I'm gonna see if we have questions, comments, suggested revisions. revisions.
I just, I just.
Take your time.
For some reason couldn't open it. I don't know why. I'm slow. Should have looked at this before.
I have a question about the definition of open letter. What does that mean?
That we would publish it to more than, we wouldn't direct it to just the MSBA, that we would publish it to more broadly and specifically to the town.
Okay. In like a press release or a letter, or like a letter to the paper or is that?
I think we could submit it as like a letter to the paper. We could think about how we publisher make it available directly, like those ideas.
I mean, in the past, we've put, not in a long time, but we have put on our district website, I forget what it's called. I mean, this might not be a great idea. It's who goes to our website to look for these things, but it's... Sorry, hold on.
Yeah. The spirit of it is for people that are casually paying attention, I think it's good to continue to make sure that they're informed of where we are and the progress we're making with you, particularly in partnering with the MSBA. That's the spirit of it.
Resolutions and statements.
Yeah. Yeah, that's another good place we probably should include as well.
Not the top place.
Yeah, I think that...
It'd be nice to multiple.
Yeah, I think the school committee in general, not even just this particular body, but previous members did a very good job of making sure information was regularly updated and posted online there. So I think we should continue to do that as we go forward in the same way. Yeah.
And this will be emailed to?
You're raising some good points. So let's start with first, do, do we want to put this in that section of the resolution and statements? What are your feelings?
I do. I mean, I don't know how much traction it'll get there, but can't hurt. We could point people to it if needed.
Yeah.
Can you link to it in the newsletter to say, like?
Right.
Yeah.
If it's living there. Because also like it gives the people the information, but it also might teach that habit, like this is a place where you can look for this kind of thing.
Yeah, we have links in newsletters. So that's a good idea.
Okay, so I'm hearing yes for that section of the, okay. And then incorporating link, which I know we have time for the newsletter and we can probably...
Yeah, there's, make sure it gets sent, then posted, then linked in our newsletter. Play a time for that. Yep.
Okay. And then I think, were you about, was the second idea to extend it as an email or maybe that's changed since we might link it in the newsletter as the newsletter goes out to the same email distribution?
I don't think it needs to go as an email, but we, I'm not on communications though, so whatever you guys think.
I agree. I think if it's in the newsletter.
Website and link to editor. Okay.
We could do a letter to the editor, but I also wouldn't be opposed to thinking about submitting a separate, I don't know, article to the paper.
Okay. Maybe this is step one.
Yeah.
And then, okay, then more to come. Okay. And I think other discussions can and will happen between the elementary school building working, building project working group about more communication, where, what we should be putting where and when. And then also kind of communications working in line with that. Okay.
Yeah.
But sorry, but a letter to the editor would reach a much wider community than our newsletter and certainly a link on our buried in our school committee part of our website.
Okay.
I think in the interest of transparency and, you know, continuing the, the spirit of this tonight was, I think, forward momentum that maybe it would be good to go ahead with that.
Yeah.
Putting it as a letter, to your point, because it will reach more people.
Yeah.
Okay. Letter or article, I guess what would be the thinking and the differential?
I would suggest a letter to the editor, this as it is.
Yeah, maybe there's just the one, like that it's submitted from you as the chair, maybe with the one preface sentence that was, this was submitted or something like that. And I know it didn't be necessary. Maybe it's just submitting the letter.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, great suggestions. Thank you.
All right. Mutual concerns.
Have it met, now that this is...
Yep.
Then I will reach out to and schedule a meeting.
Lovely.
Yes.
We were waiting for contracts too.
Yeah, that's what I was in. We're waiting for the tied with the bow.
Yep.
Ready to go.
Awesome. All right. I think we've heard plenty from negotiations and we know that there's going to be an upcoming meeting with the food service. Okay. Operations.
So we, I circulated the combination of notes for the goals, which is on the agenda for our meeting on the seventh, right? So I think we have decided we're not going to meet again, just.
I would like to, and I should have said that, but when you sent the email, now I know it's far, like close, but I would really like to meet if we can come up in time.
Okay. Yeah, so I'll reach out and we can schedule a work with Laura to get that.
Sorry.
That's okay. Yeah.
Okay.
And you said you emailed about goals?
Just us. And then we were going to agree, decide whether or not we wanted to meet again or not before circulating it to everybody. So we will do that and then get them to all of you. We pass them on to Diane.
Awesome. And I don't, I can't remember what we've done in the past, but do we treat that like new policies? Like we'll review it maybe on the seventh and then vote on it the following meeting? Okay, that sounds right.
I think we'll have it. We needed, I think we would need to... We gotta always put discussion and potential vote. I mean, if
Okay.
we all are like these, well, great, we can vote.
Okay.
Yes, and we can try to meet as soon, sooner so that we can publish it ahead of time. So you all have a chance to review and spend time with it ahead of that meeting to prepare questions or anything too. That'll help also.
All right, that's great. Heard from policy, Biffy's Policy Working Group.
Yeah, we met yesterday, last night. So it was our second meeting. We had another good discussion. We sort of decided that there's a lot of areas to tackle, but I think we decided to tackle the process. And then the process would inform the policy. Maybe I said that last time, but I think originally we were like, yeah, we're going to revise the policy. But once we started to dig into the process, we think there's a lot of areas that we could improve the process. So Dr. Blake had reached out to Laura, who does a large part of the process, to sort of get some feedback from her. And we also got some feedback from the IT department who weighs in on a lot of the grant applications as well. So we sort of have a lot of information and we're trying to sort of work through the process from the beginning of, you know, someone applying for a Biffy's grant. And we also decided to really focus on the Biffy's grants, not the TWIG grants. So our goal is to have some improvements to the process in place by the spring, Biffy's round of applications, which start sort of mid to late March. So that's sort of our timeframe. And so we're going to sort of maybe rework the timeline, the application form, and we'll sort of see how far we get. But we've come to the conclusion, there's, it's not going to be perfect this year. I think we're going to sort of make an iterative improvement, do as much as we can do. And then, you know, it'll probably, I'm guessing it will be sort of a several year working group to sort of iron it all out. But really good discussion and have a lot of information to work with. It's just hard to sort of wrap around, wrap our head around for a start. I'm feeling your pain from last year.
I'm sorry, I have to pass that pain on. No, just to put in clarification, I think we not, we wanted to do PAIN first, not TWIG, right? Just to make sure that's clear for everybody.
I said that wrong, sorry.
You said Biffy's, which is, they probably want the same thing, but...
You're right.
Yeah.
We want to focus on the PAIN grants.
Yeah.
Which is the one, once a year cycle in the spring.
Yeah.
So.
I think.
There's work to be done in TWIGs, but we felt like more of the pain points were showing up in the PAIN grant process.
I think we did a lot of data collection and thinking last year, but I think feels good to, for Matt and I, having been going into year two, like I feel like we're actually...
A hundred percent. But, you know, I think it's a good, it's a good plan. It's in my head at least. I think we can, we can follow this thing through finally.
And Laura, thank you for your, all your input and all you do every year for those grant cycles. I mean, a big part of our goal is to make your life easier and make, make the process more streamlined. And so we will be sort of reaching out to make sure that what we're doing is indeed helping, helping you and helping the process be more efficient.
That's an important and impactful one. So appreciate all the effort that's going into that.
Great. Liaison reports.
Yes, I said, yep, bike pedestrian liaison. I had, I attended my first meeting. Sorry, I attended my first meeting last week and it was really interesting. We talked about the different intersections and crosswalks that are dangerous. And so we created a list and we also discussed upcoming grants and started talking about grants. Is that the right word? Coming, yeah, right. And process on, you know, how we're going to move forward and have things ready for when something does come up. We're ready to go because a lot of times it's just 30 days, probably depending on the amount, but it's 30 days. So you kind of have to have everything like packaged and ready for different reasons, you know? So the next meeting is, well, the meetings are held the second Thursday of the month at Town Hall.
Great. Waiting work. And there was the walk and bike to school days last week.
Oh, that, yeah, yeah. That was great. My kids were on their scooters, which was really fun. That was before we had, we met. But yeah, that was, that was a great event as always, you know?
Beautiful day.
Yep.
All right. Anything that's in turf field?
Haven't met since.
All right.
But they are going to come to a future meeting soon to report in on the PAIN grant money.
Okay. Great. Other liaisons?
Yeah, Student Advisory Council. So we've met a couple of times. We met last week and obviously it was emotional. I think the, some students were there, there were field trips going on. The ones who were, as has already been said tonight, were, felt supported and felt that the school and the, you know, teachers and the dogs and all of the programming that came in was really helpful to them. They were incredibly thoughtful in thinking about already, like what the rest of the school year will look like in terms of, they talked about Spirit Week and, you know, postponing that. And then in thinking about ways that it can be intentional about honoring Matias throughout, important things that happen throughout the year, in the yearbook for graduation, those kinds of things. So incredibly poised and thoughtful that at this point already they were thinking about those things. And Mr. Mitchell, of course, did an incredible job sort of just navigating that conversation. So, yeah.
Thank you. Any other reports?
I missed the last IEF meeting. I was coming back from a PD. I don't know if anything meaningful happened there, Brian?
No. Ancient history. I can look back quick to the agenda. I didn't hear anything, you know, from Ken or anybody else, so I assumed it was all well and good. Yeah, we did the report. Reviewed several grant proposals that were, that were approved. One, one grant for middle school coed hockey uniforms, not a school-related program that I believe was, was denied. And that was, that was it. They're, they're looking at, you know, ways to do their fundraisers and get organized around raising funds for IEF in general, but then the individual pillars as well and how to, how to dedicate that money.
All right. Thank you. New business. All right, consent agenda. Move the Ipswich School Committee to accept the meeting minutes from October 3, 2024. Accept a donation from Winthrop Fries in the amount of $999.95 for the replacement of a broken basketball hoop to be deposited in the Winthrop gift account. Accept a donation from the Ipswich Education Foundation in the amount of $1,350 to subsidize funding for the Ipswich Middle School after-school YMCA bus in the form of a driver's stipend to be deposited into the middle school gift account.
So moved?
Second.
Moved, okay. Give a second to Jenny?
Yeah.
Yeah. Further discussion? Great. All in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Motion passes. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
By Jenny, second by Jen. All in favor? Okay. We are adjourned at 9:48. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night, Ipswich.